Good evening. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Mike Kinsey will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Mike. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and this is a time in which anyone who's here this evening and would like to address the board may do so. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired, and at that time I will ask that you conclude your public remarks. Please keep in mind that we'd like you to keep your comments respective, respectful, and constructive. We're all here with the goal of trying to help our students, avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district, as personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in this public forum. So we provide this as an opportunity for public comment. It's generally not a back and forth, especially for items that are not on our agenda, but we will certainly try to help out with information before or after our meeting, but we do have to proceed with our agenda items. So that being said, if anyone here this evening wishes to address the board, please come forward and state your name and address, and we'll begin. We have a nice crowd tonight, so I thought maybe. Come on. All right, then seeing none, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is a donation from Nestle USA. It is item A on page one of our exhibit, and I know we've got some people here this evening to present this, but the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges this donation in the amount of $5,000 from Nestle USA.
So moved.
Thank you, and I believe both Carrie and Cassandra are here. And you guys, that mic, if you push the little button that says "push," there should be a green light that comes on. You're good. Okay. You've done this before. You're an old poet speaking, I know.
(laughing).
You did a great job, by the way.
We are very excited to have the opportunity, and we're here with our partner for Nestle, and we received $5,000 in a donation for Wellness and Healthy Living Grant, and so we are currently looking at different avenues at our school for to provide opportunities for our students to be healthy, so we've met with the Black Hawk County Health Department and also Food Corps for different ways that we can continue to be healthy at Lowell. And I'm going to have Nestle just tell a little bit about the grant.
Excellent.
So in celebration of our 150th year in business, Nestle USA is proud to offer our Partner School Lowell, a grant of $5,000 to be used for such initiatives around nutrition, health, and wellness to start bringing, well, actually to continue bringing, just fellowship around those key initiatives because "good food, good life," as Nestle likes to say it, and we're really, really proud to be offering this to our partner school.
Thank you, and we're very, very happy to accept that wonderful donation. Thank you very much. Yeah, you've got to take a picture quick. And board, does anybody have any comments? I didn't mean to rush them off.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
And just, I'm assuming Cassandra's going to leave, but if you didn't go there last night, you missed a real treat. Hopefully her, I think her husband YouTube'd it, so if you want to find it on YouTube.
Thanks.
Cassandra spoke at the MLK banquet last night, and so in case you're wondering what we're talking about, she just did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, the next item on our agenda then is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, and all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again to Nestle USA, we sure appreciate it. Thanks for keeping me honest on the voting. There we go. The next item on our agenda is item B. It is on page two, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges this donation in the amount of $4,301 from Hellman Associates. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, and Crystal Buzz is here to tell us a little bit more.
The administration from Cunningham apologizes that they couldn't make it tonight, but Hellman Associates has been a longtime partner with the Waterloo Schools, and actually, I just looked it up before I came down, they've been a partner with the Waterloo Schools for 21 years, as of yesterday was when they signed to be official partner, and they were a partner with Roosevelt Elementary at the time, and then transitioned to Cunningham when that new building opened. So they've definitely been big supporters. The Adoptive Family is a very huge event over the winter months that a lot of our schools participate in, Cunningham especially, and so Hellman has always participated in a variety of ways. Sometimes they'll do a tree where employees will purchase gifts and then bring them. They really decided this year they wanted to do a lot, so they decided to do kind of an internal fundraiser, and then they presented Cunningham with the check right before break, so they were able to purchase things and then deliver them to families. So it was definitely a huge help that they needed and a big surprise to see that amount come in.
Crystal, do you have any idea approximately how many families are served?
I know that Cunningham really tries to help as many families as possible, so I couldn't tell you the exact amount, but I would say a majority of their families do get something over the holiday break.
Okay. Anything else for Crystal? Great, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then that takes us to exhibit C, which is the grant from the Wellmark Foundation, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges this donation in the amount of $10,000 from the Wellmark Foundation.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And I know we've got some people from Orange Elementary here today. We've got Sunny, Ms. Kimston, Ms. Snyder.
I'm just going to say, thank you for letting us come up here and like tell you a little bit about our dream, because it really started as, yeah, last year, as a little bit of a dream and a whole lot of passion behind it, and then it's transpired into what these ladies are going to present to you today.
Excellent.
My name is Janelle Kimston, and I could not be more proud to stand up in front of you tonight, and please forgive me if I get really emotional about this. In 1993, my parents decided that two years of retirement were enough. They were bored and they needed to find something a little more fun to do with their life. They had spent a combined 51 years as elementary school custodians in the Cedar Falls District, but having two daughters that were teachers in the Waterloo Community School District decided that they wanted to get back working with kids, and, but they weren't sure how to go about doing it. So I contacted Michelle T. Meyer at the time, and we got them involved in the volunteer program here in the Waterloo School District. What started out as, in their words, "We'll try it out for a month to see how it works," turned into an 18-year act of love. They truly loved every minute that they spent working with the kids in this district. When our father passed away three years ago, there was no doubt in my sister Juanita's, and she's sitting back here, but she refused to come up here tonight. She left it up to me to talk. There was no doubt in our mind that we wanted to use some of Dad's memorial money toward something that was going to be used for kids. We thought long and hard about the fact that there was no good way to get kids to the unused berm on the pre-K playground at Orange, and what better way to do that than to build a bridge, a footbridge, to get them there. Hence, come on board, Stacy Snyder, who is a rock star when it comes to writing grants, and with the amount of money that we could put towards this project from our Dad's memorial, Stacy went and just kept looking, and she found a great grant to write, and I'm going to let her talk a little bit more about this. But I can't think of a better way to honor my Dad's memory than to put his name on a bridge that is going to keep kids fit, active, and playing. So thank you.
Good evening, yeah, I'm Stacy Snyder, and I'm in my second year with Waterloo Schools and enjoying it immensely. I'm Matt Warren, and when I heard about the situation, if you look at the handout there, that top-left photo, it's maybe not as clear as it could have been, but it was taken by a drone, a friend of mine did that for us, kind of through the middle of the picture running diagonally is the stream, and so then behind that is the area that's inaccessible currently to students, and it's a pretty decent chunk. If you look at the second picture there, you can see our current K-2, right, playground area, and then that triangle, you can also see the stream again going through the middle and then that triangle, smaller there, but it's that same piece of land. So when I heard they wanted to build a bridge there, I said, "Oh, that's great." Well, I've taken a very strong interest, I'm a biology teacher by nature, in the prairie and some of the other projects already going on at Orange, and I said, "What's your plan for the area over there?" Well, if you notice that it's a deep, deep or steep incline down, and so when kids try to kick balls, the balls go into the stream. So it's more flat over the triangle, so if we can get kids over there, they can have a place to kick balls. That's what I was told the teachers would like, and I said, "Hey, have you ever heard of a playscape?" And some had, some hadn't, and that's what the rest of the pictures there show, just some examples of what a nature playscape could be. To my knowledge, I haven't found in Iowa a public school that has invested or got something like this started, and so we're real excited with us being both a leader in me and a Blue Zone school to be able to offer happy, healthy opportunities for our kids. The statistics show that average kid spends 1% time outdoors of their day and 27% with electronic media. So we're hoping to give them some opportunities such as these, as well as a place to kick their ball. If you have any questions, that's kind of our overview of what the grant's all about.
Do you have a timeline on when you think, are you going to be able to start work this spring?
We are working with some partners, VG Engineering has already drawn up a plan, and Hawkeye Community College is planning through their sustainable agricultural program, or sustainable construction, excuse me, to work with building the bridge, so it would be the fall when they could build, when their students are available, and our money needs to be spent by the end of November, November 30th.
Excellent. When you have a ribbon cutting, will you let us all know so we can come?
You bet.
All right. Yes.
Now, will you have, with the example, are you planning on having these different, I mean, I guess, what would you, activity areas? Are you, these are specific ones?
We haven't decided on the exact specific ones. I'm really partial to the spider web, that's the one on the, the square one, and that costs about $1,100. So depending on how far the money goes for just the bridge, but some of these other ones we could do with volunteer help, wouldn't take a whole lot of material, you know, like the tree, climbing through it, we're going to have to find just the right hollow log for that, but we haven't made a definitive decision, but I just wanted to show you some of the examples that I know of that are out there, and there's, if you Google it or go to Pinterest, you'll find thousands of pictures of different ideas that people use.
Very awesome, and I just wanted to thank the Kimston sisters, I see you hiding back there, but it's just an awesome thing for being educators and your parents loving kids that much, that this is something that will never go away, and it's enduring, and like you say, it's helping kids with their physical fitness and being active, and just a cool tribute and memory, so good job for doing this.
Just a question, you know, this is our, obviously our property, but it is a natural stream, is that something we got to get with the?
DNR.
DNR, something to make sure whatever structure we put over is?
That's a good question.
We've had Marty in on the conversations, and my understanding is for good, and there's also been some contact, I'm going to turn to Mike, but I think it was through the Soil and Water Conservation Districts to make sure.
Okay. Good.
Great.
I hate to get a structure up and realize we're not in compliance or something, so...
Can you repeat what he said just into the mic so that everybody can catch that?
Sure, there have been people such, or organizations such as the Department of Natural Resources and the Soil and Water Conservation District, and I think also the city, is that what you said?
Yep.
That have been there, and with our VG Engineering, they're following all the proper protocols, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. Hopefully we got it off.
There's certainly a couple things, it is really a drainage ditch, plus also their ADA department.
Right.
That's a big part of it, to make sure that it's fully accessible for all the students.
Talking that it is a drainage ditch and that also the ADA, which is what the VG Engineering has helped us with as well.
That's great to hear, you guys are taking ahead, just making sure that we...
And also, I was just thinking, just piggybacking, I don't know if the arboretum, they would like to be involved in all of this, as far as the Cedar Valley Arboretum and just some wildlife and planting.
Yeah, that's an idea, we sure can check with them. Yeah, thanks.
And then another partner, maybe.
Exactly. Contact Community College.
Partner, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And you can probably check with Iowa State Extension as well, I know their Food Corps, and then they have, just check with them, Shelley Smith would be able to help you direct to, who might be able to help to get some of their human capital as well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, or the Carver Greenhouse, we got lots of ideas, you guys are going to (laughing). I just want to echo what Sue said, too, just thanks again, I know Ms. Kimston, you, and I know how much your dad meant to you and both your parents clearly, but this is just an awesome way to honor them, so thank you, thank you, and thank you for doing something that contributes to the better good of even more of our kids coming forward, so we appreciate it. Now you get to take your picture. Maybe your sister will come up for that, come on. Come on, you're part of this. I won't ask you any questions. Get up there. We got all these people here, we got to do something with you.
It's great that we're involving Hawkeye students as well in this. And maybe someday we could involve our own high school students in projects like this.
Okay, so I'm not going to get ahead of myself, I'm going to make sure we vote on this before anybody leaves tonight, so all those in favor then of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, we appreciate it very much. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda, and this evening it consists of six items, the minutes of the January 4th, 2017 special board meeting, and the January 9th, 2017 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the teacher enrichment grants, the set date for the public hearing for the remodel project at Central Middle School, and the set date for the public hearing for the 2017-18 school district calendars. Can I get those, actually, are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
I guess item I and item G.
Item I and item G, I'm going to go the other way around. Item G's and item I. Anything further? Then can I get items D, E, F, and H, a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item G, which is on page 23, and I have to get to it. There we go. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the RJ McElroy Trust teacher enrichment grants in the amount of $426,030.
$4,265.
Thirty.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And I guess I just didn't want this to go through without being noticed, I think it's, they're awesome ideas, and I would like to know a little bit more about these projects if at some point, and to recognize the teachers, do we have?
Yeah.
Okay, super. Good.
Hello, my name's Tanya Ryan, I am from Elk Run Preschool, and I wrote for the grant for the three bin composter. I'm really excited and very proud to be here tonight and to accept this because this is such a great hands-on learning for these kids. They get the opportunity to grow and care for a school garden, which many children who live within the city limits don't have that opportunity to do. Some of the things that we've done, this has been a three-year program now, and some of the things that we did was last year we took a gardening 101 class to learn about how we could help sustain our garden, and one of the things that they had mentioned was this compost bin, and this compost bin is not only for helping teach the kids about decomposition and how to maintain the soil, but it also helps us reduce trash, and it's because it's three bins, we fill in one bin at a time, and they're able to see the decomposition process as it's happening, as we open it up. So it's kind of a really neat, innovative thing to do, because we've always done worms and we've had Hartman Reserve come out, and this just kind of plays off, pardon me, what they're doing with us and everything. One of the other things we're doing with it is that my special education class and one of the general education classes are working together on a life science, like cooperative teaching opportunity for some of those kids that don't get their inclusive time in the traditional methods. This gives them at least an hour once a week where we work with the general education class, and helps prepare these kids that are going into kindergarten for that kind of curriculum and everything. So we also have partnerships with master gardeners from the farmers markets around the area. My family does farmers markets, so I have the assistance of Meow Acres and everything as well, so they donate a lot of our seeds. We've gone to Carver, we have field trips scheduled to Hanson's Dairy and to the arboretum to kind of help talk about not only what plants do for us, but for animals and, and all those different things. So this is such an exciting time to be at Elk Run, and we're really excited and grateful for this grant.
Thanks, Tanya, I didn't know your family was with Meow Acres, I've seen them at a couple different farmers markets, even down in Cedar Rapids.
Yes, we do the Ames Cedar Rapids and the Cedar Falls Farmers Markets. I'm very busy once it becomes gardening season, so I do the traveling ones.
That's awesome, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And to Sue's point, I'll just go ahead, just for our viewers, in case anybody, and for those of you guys that are sitting out here in the audience, I'll just tell you what the other four things are that we funded. There was a scene free coding in preschool with Cubetto, I'm not exactly sure what all this stuff is, but that also was at Elk Run. That's why I said screen-free. What did I say? Sorry. I'm sorry. I said, never mind, I thought I said screen. I can't enunciate very well this evening, I'm having a bad day, so. Using Science to Grow, I think I got that one, Hand, Hand, Fingers Drum, and Empowering Students to Self-Manage Their Health and Well-being Through Technology. So there's four other grants besides the bin composter, so thanks a lot to all of you for participating and turning in those grants and for RJ McElroy for funding them, we sure appreciate it, despite the fact that I can't say them right, so.
But, and I think it's cool to notice, too, that we have all levels, you know, they awarded to the preschool, which is super, and then elementary, the middle school, and the high school, so that's kind of an awesome gamut of involving all of our students, so thank you to the McElroy Trust.
Awesome. Anything further? Great, then all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item I, which is the next item, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the set, and set the date of February 13th, 2017 at 6:00 PM for the public hearing regarding the 2017-2018 school district calendars. And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I was just wondering, are we going to see the calendar prior to that?
You certainly, you certainly are, and so let me just say that the process has been, just like, you know, that thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle that you bring all the family together to help you do it, we've taken a lot of information from many stakeholders. We did a survey to parents and had over a thousand responses. We have run it through our committee, where we have our teacher input and administrative input. We have also worked with athletic directors, because we know at the end of the year, especially how the, now the new start date, based on state law, has kind of affected our athletic events and state activities. We worked it through Dr. Pappas to support us and make sure that our graduation dates are not in conflict with some of the major events, and we've also looked at potential weather outcomes, and so we've built into that. And so we're very happy to bring that to the board, and also one of the pieces, we're also trying to coordinate with Hawkeye Community College to support our expansion of career and technology education and dual enrollment.
No, I just kind of wanted to get that out there, because people said, "Well, who does the calendar?" I got a call and said, "When are we going to know when they're going to graduate the next year?" You know, and I just think that if the public knows, it's a process, and we try to involve as many stakeholders as we can, and I appreciate that.
I was going to echo that and just say that I think this year we've already seen, you know, trying to set and keep our graduation dates not to be affected by snow, and obviously we've now had ice, so I hope that we're going to see those, you know, something similar built into this next year calendar, it sounds to me like we will be.
And you will.
Excellent, excellent, I appreciate that, so we'll look forward to seeing that, then, so.
And really, I, kudos to Dr. Smith and Dr. McNulty, because Shanley just jokingly said, "Are we on the 25th rendition?" And really, she's right, that's about what it is, if not more. So we run it through so many different groups, and I think we maybe have a better process, and even, we're going to try to speed it up. This was really a good, solid process, but it took a long time, so we're going to, we've talked about it, and we think we might have a way to speed that up a little bit, but it, when you, when you're going to get input from people, it just takes a while, so.
And I think one of the things, too, is there's some things that were happening at the state level that kind of allowed us to delay. We weren't sure if we were going to have a new assessment, and that new assessment would have actually added, probably taken away a lot of days from the semester, just because it was going to take time. When we found out that wasn't the case, it allowed us to kind of move forward.
And I really appreciate getting the parents, you know, of...
A thousand parents is a lot.
Yeah, that's good, so, very good job.
So that July, or that February 13th meeting will be the next time that we are able to set those, and we'll all get to see them, and then we can share them, so all of our families can know, so, great. Any other questions? Mike, you're good? Okay. Then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That concludes the items on our consent agenda tonight, and takes us then to the next item, which is Exhibit J. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the purchase of land as presented for the Orange Elementary School complex.
So move. Second.
Thanks. And discussion? If not, you know, I might jump around and be excited about this, but I'll try to keep it to a dull roar.
I just had a question as far as back in, I guess, in '11. So, that, what, do we know what that property assessed at at that time?
We do not. I don't know. But I, we were part of the discussion. The facilities committee was part of the discussion at that time, and there were tenants there that had, you know, a lease, and so, there was discussion. Clearly, that's a piece of property that would be helpful to us going forward for any of our Orange families who know that traffic can get just a little congested at the end of the day, and the beginning of the day. And I do think acquiring that property is definitely something that will be beneficial for us, maybe eventually for a bus lane, some of those things. So...
Well, it squares off the property with the roadway, and it was kind of a keyhole there.
Is there any asbestos problems in the house that we're aware of, or anything?
I don't think so. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the house will just be demolished. That's the plan. We're not planning on keeping it and/or renting it or anything. It's just going to be gone. So...
And it maybe should be noted that, as, you know, we have a lot of buildings around, but we do really pay attention to the land around our buildings, and we take advantage of things, you know. I know that Orange is not the only building that has some traffic, you know. Sometimes we, sometimes there just isn't more land, and so we make the, we make the very best route pattern, you know, pickup pattern that we can with the land that's available. And as land becomes available, or, you know, people sell houses like this, then we do take advantage of that to try to expand. But sometimes it takes a little while, as is the case here.
Well, and I'm sure glad we put in a minimum and a maximum, because at least we're not that far off from the minimum.
Well, and beyond just squaring it off, it also will allow us, if there's further development around the school, it will give us that perimeter that we, that we like to have.
Bull buffer zone.
Yeah, exactly, with our elementaries, especially with kids walking and all of that. So, just a safety thing, too.
Plus, you'll be able to see the school.
That's right. Yes. So, any other questions? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, and so I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Lindeman, for her report.
Sure, just a couple things. First of all, I would make note that we are three meetings into our eighth grade parent meetings for registration. I think the public is very aware. It seems like everywhere I go, people have said, "Oh, I've heard you on the radio," or "I've seen the, the public notices for the eighth grade parent meetings for registration, registering for high school." And the thing that I would make note of is, we've had, we've had almost 300 parents already come to the meetings that we've had, which has been fabulous. And so, we've got 425 more who need to come, and we've got two meetings coming up. One is tomorrow night at Bunker at 6:30, and then the last one is Thursday night at Central at 6:30. So, if you are part of the 425 parents who have not come yet, we really, really need you to attend one of the two remaining mandatory meetings. And the thing I would note, that it is really hard when you have, when you have a diverse group of parents in front of you, some who are having their oldest child go into high school for the first time, and some who have had five children who have all gone through high school, and this is their sixth children, sixth child. One thing we've noticed is that it has really been well-received, regardless of whether, I think out of all of the notes, we collect a little exit ticket of a survey, and I believe out of the 300 that have filled out a survey so far, I believe there have only been five who said it was not. They didn't believe that it was as beneficial for them, because they had multiple children already. But to have, you know, 295 yeses that it was helpful is really, I think that's very, very telling. So, we're happy about that, and we hope that we get a good turnout. We've done, we've done quite a few calls. Tara and her department have done some robo-calls, so I believe everyone knows about it. So, hopefully, we'll get a good turnout there. One other thing, too, I want to just, this is just a comment, I guess. As I've been out and about in the, in the buildings, one thing that I've talked, I've talked with a lot of new teachers, teachers who are in their very first year, and one of the things, it's on, can you not hear me? He's saying he can't hear me, so I'm going to scoot it up a little bit. My button is on, but hopefully...
You can use mine.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it doesn't come back out, I'm going to assume it's working now. But, you know, just, I want to congratulate the, anybody who's a new teacher, because I know that going through the very first year is really tough. But I also want to thank the, the teachers who are either formally or informally serving as a mentor to our new teachers. They have really been walking the new teachers through the process, and it is, it is tough to come in, and especially tough in a, in a district if they grew up in a rural, you know, rural area, and then they come to Waterloo. It's more urban, it's more diverse, and they may not come with all of the tools in their toolbox that they need. And so, you know, God bless those, those new teachers, and they're sticking with it, and they're doing a great job, and I just thank all of our existing staff for helping them through that. So, I just, I just happened to see that, I was at Cunningham the other day, and I just, I saw a veteran teacher, and it really wasn't a long-time veteran, but I think I think he's been at it for five years, helping a newbie, and I just, I really, really appreciated that. So, with that, I'm going to, for the first time, get the kindergarten registration dates. We are, I shared this in the Thursday update, but one of the things that we are doing is really looking at kindergarten registration. It is, we had a tough time getting registrations in last year, so we are backing it up a little bit. And so, we will be publicizing this as much as possible, but since we have an audience, I'm going to make sure I let you guys know, and you're going to pass the word to everybody that you talk with. Oh, hello. There we go. I didn't do anything. It just came on. So, March 30th and 31st will be parent, it'll be kindergarten roundup, no, kindergarten registration. So, we'll have roundup at a later date, but we are going to have people come into a central location on March 30th and 31st. And so, we want them to register their kids. We're really hoping that we won't end up with that, kind of that bottleneck of kindergarten families registering their kids in August. So, we'll get more information out about that, but that's kind of the rationale behind why we are, we are doing it that way. And then, my final comment is, I think way back in November, I had talked about the strategic plan and the acronym that you see up here for PACE, P-A-C-E, and that stands for people, achievement, community, and environment. And I had made a comment that we were going to start going through each of those letters and kind of just give an update to the board and do it publicly on TV. And we did not, we were going to start in January, but we've actually pushed that back to February. So, at the very next meeting, we will be tackling the first letter, which is the P for people. And so, we're going to kind of tell some of the background on, in our strategic plan, what we are doing to bolster the, the skills of our existing staff, and how we are using people to accomplish our mission. So, I think Dr. Smith is going to take a lead on that, but we'll certainly have some other people here to share. So, that will be at our, at our next meeting. So, and then we'll continue on with A and C and E right after that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Mike, you're over there all by yourself. So, I'm, I'm going to move on to comments from board meeting, board me, members. Boy, I really can't talk tonight. I don't know what my problem is. I've been in meetings for too long today. I apologize. So, Mr. Kinsey, you have the floor.
Just a small con, comment concerning the state legislature with state assessments. I'm concerned with, with what's being discussed at the state level. A lot of work has been done to this point with the direction that I think a lot of educators are leaning toward, and to have it be sidelined at, at this late date is troublesome to me. And I hope they take their work seriously in, in making the decision moving forward as to what direction they're going to go, and that we can get an assessment that does truly, you know, gauge our students' abilities to, to learn and to have a good education and be able to assess that properly. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Well said. Sue Flynn?
Well, I just want to encourage our students that it's a new semester. Start over. If last semester was not up to your abilities, work harder this semester. But you have a clean slate for the semester, so start over and do a good job. Also, as far as the eighth grade meetings, this is the first time we've done this, and I think it's an extremely important and powerful way to get our students greatly prepared for high school. And we do know that things come up, that if you can't make one of the next two meetings, very critical to get your, come in for a meeting with a counselor, or you really want to get your child on the right course as they begin high school. And that is another reason why we have prepared the time and the efforts and the energies of our staff to have these meetings. So, you have two more opportunities, and if for some reason you cannot, cannot contact Dr. Lindeman's office, you can speak with Pam and/or Dr. Lindeman, and we can get something set up, because it's critical to get your eighth grader. It's overwhelming to go to high school in the first place. And if you can start out with this little, ahead-of-the-game plan, I think it's just awesome for our students. So, I want to thank everybody that's been involved with that.
Angela?
I have three things. I'm not, I know that you want to talk about one of mine, so I'm just going to do a little...
No, you can take it. You take it. I've got something else. You're good.
Josh, Josh.
So, last night, several of us that are sitting up here had an opportunity to go to the MLK banquet, which is put on by the Hawkeye Community College and the Hawkeye Community Foundation. And one of our lead teachers actually was the speaker, and she did such an excellent job. But the speakers that I really want to talk about are those who came and presented their essays, and their speaking skills were amazing, and their grasp of how our world should be is just amazing. So, if we were looking to them for the future, we're going to be in great hands. So, if any of them are listening, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And they all were so adorable. And my nieces were so mad that they didn't get to write essays. They were like, "What is this essay thing?" So, they came and they saw it, and they thought that they also did, that was their favorite part, too, and the cheesecake. That I made them wait to eat, even though they told them they could eat it ahead of time. I was like, "But they're not your parent." The other thing is, East-West game is this weekend. It's always so much fun to attend. My sister and I are planning on going to the girls' game, and then on to the UNI game. And we look forward to watching our community have good sportsmanship and share with each other fun and laughs and memories. I know, just recently on my timeline, my sister's East-West game, her last one as a senior, she had 27 points just in free throws, and she had a total of 37 points that night. And that was the only game of hers I ever missed. But at the same time, those were memories. I mean, because that was her best game ever, was against the West High. So, it's always great to have those crosstown rivalries and have good sportsmanship with it, because I think Nina actually played in that game, so it might have been her sophomore year, because I think Nina's, anyway, Nina actually played in that game, and like, congratulate Regina. Then it was in the newspaper. That was part of the article. So, I just read that on my Facebook timeline the other day. And then, my third thing is, kudos to all of the people who have noticed that the movie that we've talked about several times is good material for your classroom. And I think, I thank you for sharing that with students that are beyond, those who are going to go into STEM, beyond being women, and beyond minorities, because those are three of the things that are in that, but it's beyond that. For all of our students, it's important. So, thank you for that.
That's an excellent movie.
Hidden Figures.
I went yesterday.
Thank you.
Hidden Figures, right. Not Hidden Fences. I didn't say it wrong. It's Hidden Figures. I got it, I got it. I know, but that's a different, Fences is a wholly different movie. So, it's Hidden Figures. So, all right, Jesse?
All right. Now, I was going to take your funder tonight, so... So, a date not on the calendar, but a big one for district. Saturday, we are hosting Mississippi Valley Conference Wrestling Tournament at West High. So, 14 teams come in. It will be an all-day event. I just come from a meeting of volunteers, and could always use a few extra people helping out, but we've got a couple other groups that are helping out. I think West High Choir's helping out. We got Kiwanis helping out, different groups. So, anybody wants to come out and see some of the best wrestling in the state, Saturday about 19:00 AM.
Okay. From both East and West, in large group theater and speech, was this past weekend up in Waverly, and we had a lot of our students make it on to state. So, that happens on Saturday, February 4th. Actually, it's districts that go on in Dubuque, and then if they make that far, then they go on to state. So, they still have a couple steps to make, but a lot of them made it on to districts. So, kudos to all of those students that did that. So, is there anything else that any board member wishes to throw out there? Mike, I just want to piggyback on your comment about the legislature and say that all of us have the opportunity, the Urban Education Networks are going on February 15th down to the Capitol to lobby. If there's anybody interested in going with us, I know that Sue and I are planning on going. I know Dr. Lindeman will be going. We'd certainly like to take any parents, students that want to come with us. We always, it's important to get our information down there to our legislators. So, we would welcome anybody that would be interested in doing that with us.
And I, just for the purpose of the class that's sitting before us, if you have not followed that as people who are studying education, you really need to look at the legislature and find out, because this is the first year, I've been at this for, I really don't know how many years, like 29 or something, but this is the, the first year that I remember such extreme laws or such extreme bills coming forward. So, if you look at them, I would, I would, you have pencils in front of you, so I would suggest that you look at House File 29, House File 30, House File 31. Those, they, they negate the state test, they negate the state curriculum, and they abolish the Department of Education. So, these are really, really strong bills that are being proposed. And if you actually went back and looked at Schoolhouse Rock, if you remember those of us who are a little bit older, we remember Schoolhouse Rock and How You Become a Bill, or Remember I'm Just a Bill. If you go back and look at that, you know, it goes through Subcommittee, and then it goes through the committee, the whole committee, and then it goes to the floor. And then if it passes there, it goes to the other side. And it's really, I mean, it's a long process, but some of these have made it through one or two of those steps. So, we really need to watch that. And I would encourage you, as people in education, I would really encourage you to think very hard about if these pass, what would be, and sometimes bills have a, you know, sometimes bills are good, and sometimes they're not good. But for each bill that's proposed, I try to think of the impact on students, the impact on our district, the impact on our state, the impact on economical development. And so, I would really, you know, prompt you to think through some of those things, as we have been. You know, every time one of them comes out, I instantly start looking at it from various lenses. So, that's just my, I guess, maybe a parting gift as we are ready to close our meeting.
That's her editorial for the evening. There you go. The next meeting that we will have actually is three weeks from now, so I just want to make note of that. It will be February 13th, so we won't be back here in two weeks. It will be three weeks, because we have a fifth Monday in January. So, unless anybody has anything further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Sorry for my sticky teeth.